Okay, it is 5:30. I'm gonna call this meeting of the city council committees to order. We have some people not with us, as you can see, so we're gonna have to juggle the lineup a little bit here tonight. We're gonna start with Public Health and Safety Committee, so Chairman Newby.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Officer Leneer, would you like to come?
Yes, sir. All right. Jeremy Leneer with Stevieville Police Department. So, the department is coming forth and we're asking for a positive recommendation to approve change order number three for the contract with L-3 Harris in regards to the new radio system. This change order will involve purchasing some new equipment, including some batteries, some programming, cables and dongles for the radio system, but the largest portion of it will be to purchase some additional interoperability radios, which is just a fancy way of saying there are radio heads that attach to our system that allow us to communicate better with agencies that do not have the same radio systems as us. So, any of the county units, any of the surrounding counties that do not have the L-3 Harris that can't be programmed into ours, this allows us to communicate with them as though they are programmed into our radio system. So, when this was installed, we have some of those, they're 20-years-old radios that are at the PD that would have to be moved. So, one of the things that's asking for in this change order is that they, there are already some temporary ones installed that are on loan from L-3 Harris that some of these would replace with radios that belong to the city. They would have to be moved from their current location when we made the joint dispatch jump. If we move them now, and they're already set to be installed there, we will not have to move them again once we move into a new building for joint dispatch. However, if we wait and we estimate with L-3's help that it would cost more to install the new ones at the current location and then pay to move them again, whereas if we just spend the money now and place them at the Prather Tower site, then we won't have to go back and pay to move radios a second time. There was some, there was some credit that was saved in previous change orders that can be applied towards this, and then we would also ask that some of the funding be considered for the joint dispatch, as this would be kind of the first physical step towards making that a possibility.
So, any questions?
Can I ask one?
Pardon?
Can I ask one?
Sure.
So, you said that this would be for interdepartmental communication.
Yes, sir.
What's the long-term use of that? If everybody, if we did the joint dispatch, how does that impact?
Ultimately, I mean, long-term, one, it's gonna take the county, even though they are coming online with the L-3 Harris system, it's gonna take them some time to build theirs and get us established, so we can use that in the meantime. What it also enables us to do is, if we had a major event here and you had agencies come in to help, like happens with a major event, that don't have L-3 Harris radios but have access to traditional analog VHF/UHF, then we can put them, it's easier to program those radios onto that interoperability gate. It also allows us to continue to communicate with other surrounding agencies like Eastland or Comanche, those that have not gone on with L-3 Harris. So, even though initially those heads would be programmed to help us with all the county fire departments and everything else, they can be reprogrammed to any other VHF/UHF radio set. So, it will just continue to give us a better interoperability with traditional radio systems that don't match our L-3 Harris. So, they won't become useless, in other words.
Any other questions? To make a motion that we approve the change order to the system purchase agreement between the city and L-3 Harris. It's been moved and settled. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No.
Okay. Is that it, sir?
Pardon?
Is that it?
That's it.
Thank you very much.
I thank you.
So, we will move on to nominations committee meeting.
So, with the ordinance established with the Airport Advisory Board, we do have a clause in there that states if you're absent more than twice within a 12-month period, that is your voluntary resignation from the board. And we do currently have a seat that, person that has been notified that they have been removed from the board due to lack of attendance. And then we also have someone who's applied to fill the place of the person coming off the boards. So, the gentleman that we're moving from place seven is going to be Chris Williams. And then, the person that we've got the application for to fill his position is Craig Parks. So, I'd like to make a recommendation to the full council placing Craig Parks in place seven and place of Chris Williams.
That's a motion.
That's a motion, yes, sir.
Second?
I've got a motion of second on favor. Say aye.
Aye.
No opposed. Perfect. So, we'll make that motion to council. The second is a similar situation in the Tourism and Visitor Bureau Advisory Board. We currently have three members who have missed more than the allotted amount for their positions, and we would like to remove Phil Greer from place two, Austin Hubbard from place four, and Sonia Olivera from place seven, from the Tourism and Visitor Board. And then, we have someone we'd like to fill place seven, and that is Kimberly Forns. So, I'd like to make the motion that we remove the three, place two, place four, and place seven due to lack of attendance, and then I'd like to make, I guess I need to make vote on that one first. And then, so, I'd like to make a motion that we remove place two, place four, and place seven due to attendance.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes. And then, I'd like to make the motion to fill place seven with Kimberly Forns.
Seven.
Okay. Motion pass, or, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Perfect. Motion passes. And the next one is quite a doozy. I'm sorry, let me get that page. The, where is it at? Here it is. So, it's the dismembering of the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and the Senior Citizens Advisory Board, and then reforming those as a joint, a joint board, just due to attendance. And the senior citizen center is moving to the park, and we think it'd be more beneficial to have both those boards working as one. Do y'all have any questions about that one? No? Okay. So, then, is it, Sarah, what ordinance is this? Sorry.
Um, it won't have an ordinance number.
Yep.
Correct. Recommend to council that they consider the ordinance.
Thank you. So, I would like to make the recommendation to council that we, sorry, repeal, ordinance repeal the provisions outlined in Chapter 32, Section 32.20 through 32.34, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and Section 32.50 through 32.64, Senior Citizen Advisory Board of the Stevieville Code of Ordinants. Need a second on that one, please?
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Stay.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, before we move on, how does that play out? Two out of four?
Well, you go with what's present.
That's right.
Okay.
And then, I guess the second motion would each recommend to full council an ordinance to create a new section, a new section of the Chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinants known as the Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board. It's drafted in the ordinance below, or it's in our packet that she sent over. It's just the combining of the two. Opinion on that one, if you could?
Well, could I just ask a question? So, the two boards exist today, seven members, nine members, something like that?
Yes, sir.
How do we, when this single board is created, how do we deal with the existing members of the board?
They'll have to reapply to be seated on the new board.
Okay.
And the new board would be seven members.
Okay.
Have we had a chance to talk about this?
You're welcome to.
I mean, before we just get in here, all of a sudden I make something like this, I'd like to have some time to think about it.
Okay. We can table this.
I would like to table it.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, just bring up a couple points for members. Darren, if you'll come up. This has been discussed with both boards, is that correct, Mr. Tressel?
Yes, sir.
In the feedback?
The senior board voted unanimously at their meeting. There was one member not present at that meeting. My understanding is she reached out and has some concerns about it, that that was the only...
In the Parks Board?
The Parks Board didn't have a quorum at the meeting that we discussed this to vote on it. And so, that's part of the problem is, I mean, we're probably going on two to three years where we really don't have a quorum. Most of the time, we have a Parks Board meeting. And the seniors that we put on these boards tend to be the people who are attending these meetings at a higher rate, so we gotta get some people in the room to attend the meetings.
That's what kind of drove the discussion with staff and Ms. Smith and those particular boards.
So, you're saying the folks on the senior advisory board are comfortable with assuming...
At the meeting that it was brought up and discussed, they voted unanimously to merge the boards.
And so, you'll do some training for them to just, I mean, they probably have never seen the Parks Master Plan that you're, that you're working on?
So, several of those board members did actually, honestly, some of those board members probably attended it at just as high rate of our, as our Parks Board members to that stuff, because there were implications for the senior center moving to the park, and then there's things that some of our senior groups want to see, whether it's pickleball courts, or they're interested in the trail. We've got one member right now that's very interested in air conditioning for the rec hall and stuff like that, because they wanna move some senior events over there, dances and things like that. They wanna make them bigger. So, I think they have an interest in several areas. We've got interest right now from senior group in bringing back senior softball and stuff like that. So, I think they share an interest in both areas, and there's enough commonality that if we can get a good mix on the board, I mean, it helps us if we can have one meeting where we actually have a quorum.
How do you feel about it, Darren, your personally?
I mean, I brought it, I brought it up over, it's been a while since we've talked about it. Probably when I was on council, to be honest, is when we first started bringing it up in 20.
Do you feel like it's advantageous to do this?
I think so. I think it's gonna be the best thing. I think it'll give us better attendance at the meetings. I think the seniors speak into things a little bit more and are a little more outspoken. And so, I think it's, I think it's a good thing. And it does let them speak into some things that are outside of, their board is really formed just for the senior center. And now that they're in the park, there's a lot of other things that they can take advantage of there, whether it's fitness classes in the aquatics area or doing stuff at the rec hall. I know we have problems, our yoga class is very big, and even in the new center, I feel like they're gonna be pressed for space. And so, they're gonna wanna move those things around, and I think this helps to have everybody on the same page instead of two boards that don't communicate with each other.
Remember, while this may be charting a new direction with these boards, it's not a final thing, and so, if after this, suddenly we find higher interest from a younger, more Parks-focused group, you can either expand the board, you can split them again. I mean, it is, I mean, this is just trying to find a solution for a problem that exists today. If that problem isn't going away down the road, or we need to make adjustments, that's always, you know, in council's tool belt to do.
I think in the three years I've been attending senior meetings, I wanna say maybe once we didn't have a quorum. I mean, in the three years I've been, I've been, I've been attending Parks Board meetings for much longer. I think I've been on the Parks and Recreation Board. I've probably been doing that for about eight years. I mean, there are, it's a lot of times that we do not have a quorum. So, and it's not for lack of trying. I mean, we communicate the meetings and tell people when they are and email them. We've sent out polls and tell us what's your best available time, and people just can't make it. But a lot of those people on that board have young kids. They want to be involved in it. They just don't have time. So, we're just not getting the attendance we need. So, I think there's a few board members on there that would like to step up and be on this next board. I know they've expressed interest in that. So, if we can keep some of those really good board members, then I think this is a good move. But this still has to go to full council, too.
Right.
So, this isn't like it's a final decision.
Yeah, they're just the advisory board. I'm not saying they're not at court, because they don't have any legislative authority.
I'm just trying to gain some, some information on this, that's all.
Yes, sir.
So, you still like to wait?
We can move it to, we can move it to full council.
Then I'd like to make a motion that we recommend to full council an ordinance creating a new section of Chapter 32 of the Code of Ordinants known as Parks and Leisure Service Advisory Board. The draft ordinance is attached in the packet. But, so I'd just like to make the motion that we move it to full council.
Seven.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That is all I have. Thank you so much.
Okay, with that, we have two additional committee meetings scheduled for this evening, but we don't have a quorum for either one. We do have an executive session. We do have a quorum to do that, so what I would like to do, if no one has any problems with it, is, is suspend our committee meetings at this, at this point, and then move into that executive session. Anybody have a problem with that? Randy, you good with that?
That's fine.
Okay. So...
Yeah, you gotta call soon.
Into a meeting. So, right now, at 5:46, we're gonna recess out of the council committee meetings, and I apologize to our guests who are here. You guys are just gonna have to bear with us until we can get some. But it's, and then, at 5:47, I will call to order a special city council meeting for the City of Stevieville. And with that... Where's the one? Yep. In accordance with Section 551.071, consultation with an attorney to talk about pending or contemplated litigation, we are going to retire into executive session. And we will be back as soon as that conversation ends. Thank you all. Thank you all.
Six forty-four and we will call the, well, I'll just say that there's no action taken out of the executive session and at six forty-four, we'll call the council committee meetings back into order. We do have a quorum. Mr. Basket for your committee.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I'd ask Steve to come on up and give us an update on the thoroughfare plan that we're working on.
Good evening everyone.
All of us.
Yes, all of you. So yes, Councilman Basket asked me to come and provide just an update on the comprehensive and thoroughfare plan. So just a little bit of history there. We did RFP in December of 2022, RFQ actually, and that was awarded in April of 2023. It's a twelve-month process. It officially kicked off right around May, end of April, first of May. And the process consists of four phases. The first phase is phase one. It's referred to as the think phase. And this is where they develop a project management plan, a stakeholder engagement plan. They establish goals and metrics. They had a kickoff meeting, May seventeenth, with city staff, and we established a biweekly meeting schedule. We also established a twenty-five member, a community member advisory panel and set up a schedule for the advisory panel. On June fifteenth, at five PM, a series, actually, it started at nine AM. There was a series of focus group meetings throughout the day on June fifteenth, with several topics being covered. The advisory panel had their first meeting at the conclusion of the focus group meetings at about six o'clock that evening and discussed the outcome for the day. There were sixty people roughly in attendance throughout that first, uh, first event. So we're really pleased with the outcome. Phase two is what we are wrapping up at the moment. It's the investigate stage. The advisory committee, second meeting, was held on August ninth. It was a virtual meeting. There were some technical difficulties there that I'll touch on a little bit later. Uh, we discussed population projections and existing conditions, revisited the goals with us members of the community. And on August seventeenth, a second open house was held at the Stevieville Independent School District. I believe it's called the auditorium building. At that open house that lasted from six to eight, we had about fifty participants show up. There was a hands-on exercise where they got to discuss how they would spend city dollars if they were in leadership positions. They, they, basically, the outcome of that was streets department spend more on streets and then also more on, or at least prioritize public safety behind that. They also discussed a little bit about transportation related to walkability and bicycling as part of the priorities that they established from that exercise. The first draft was just recently submitted. It was, uh, part one of the comprehensive plan. It was submitted to staff for review. We just sent comments back on that plan or on that first draft on October twelfth. Um, on October nineteenth, we anticipate that coming back and being directed to the, or distributed to the advisory panel. And then we will have a follow-up meeting with the advisory panel. It'll be meeting number three on October twenty-sixth, and that will be to define any alternatives that the, the advisory panel may want to suggest from their review of the document. We have open house number three is scheduled for November ninth. That will be again back at the school district building. And then the advisory panel, panel number four, the fourth meeting, is to be determined. Uh, the last phase is phase four, and that's the share phase. And that's basically when we will have a, a final draft available, and it will be distributed to council. And of course, we'll have public hearings and adoption meetings following that. Again, we're, we're targeting wrapping this up in, uh, April or May of 2024. Uh, the, the best news, I guess, is that we've met milestones associated with phase one and phase two. We're one hundred percent on schedule. We're one hundred percent on budget. So, uh, that's, that's the good news. We did have, uh, or I did have one of the advisory panel members approach me about, uh, the remaining two advisory panel meetings being held in person. We did solicit, uh, input from the consultant on that, and I included in your, your packet what it would cost to have those two meetings, uh, in person. What I'd like to suggest in, in learning from the, the last meeting where we had some technical difficulties, uh, with some, I think some of the panel members had a hard time connecting, uh, what, what I'm suggesting that we do instead of spending the additional funds for in-person meetings is that I will simply have a room set up here. I was out of town at the last meeting and I was not able to, I, I too remoted in. Uh, what I, what I will do this time is I will set up a, a meeting over in the, uh, training room, and I will let, of course, any, any panel member that wants to attend, um, and meet with me and meet with the consultant virtually, we'll do that, but we'll host it here at the city. And hopefully that will take care of some of the connectivity issues that we had. So with that, be glad to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions for Steve? Steve, you said there's gonna be another open house. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I would really encourage everybody that didn't make it to the first open house to make it to this one. Uh, it's very interesting, to say the least. Uh, like Steve said, the participants, you know, citizens and, uh, and other city leader, leaders and, and college university leaders, uh, were given, you know, were given play money and a certain amount, and that was, that was their budget to spend, uh, on city needs. And I think that was very eye-opening to a lot of people. Um, also, uh, one, one deal is they, they gave us a, a QR code and gave everybody in the, in attendance the ability to vote on what was more important to them. Uh, so it was, it was a pretty large focus group. Uh, it would be nice if it was a little bit bigger. Uh, I think we need to expand that and hopefully get some more people out there next time. Um, I mean, there was probably, what, sixty, seventy people there or so?
Yes, sir.
So, you know, I'd like to see, you know, a little over a hundred people there. The blind auditorium isn't enough to, to, to hold that and get a little bit more, um, input from the citizens and, and us up here as well. So I would encourage everybody to, to come to that. Any other questions for Steve?
I'd just like to ask, you said the staff has been looking at this, this draft that you did receive this.
Yes, sir.
Preliminary. What, what kind of, you said you had comments. What kind of comments have y'all had back to them?
The content was, was fairly, I mean, I was, I was pleased with the content. Um, Mr. Williams caught a couple of things that he wanted to point out. I had a few fact-checked items as well that I sent back to them. Uh, there, there was, uh, it was a rough draft, and so we've asked him to clean that up and, and try to blend some of the writing styles, because you can tell there were multiple contributors to the document. So we wanted it to be a little more, or a kind of a seamless document and not something that, that looked like it was, it seemed like it was obvious that they had multiple people contributing. And so I was hoping that they could smooth that out. Overall, the comments were, were not as in-depth as I thought they would be. I thought we might have more issue with some of the content. The content seemed very accurate. So overall, pleased with the document. Just cleaning it up, making it a little more presentable for, you know, the, the advisory panel was, was the main part of it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thanks, Steve.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I turn that concludes the Development Services Committee.
Thank you, sir. That just leaves this Public Works Committee. We've got several items on the agenda here tonight for that. And I invite Mr. Williams to talk to us about hazardous waste, household hazardous waste agreement with City of Fort Worth.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair. The household hazardous waste program is, it's a program that the city's been working with, the city of Fort Worth with for over twenty years. And it provides an opportunity for residents to dispose of household chemicals, paint, light bulbs, batteries, fertilizers, insecticides, herbicides at, uh, at a location, uh, at the municipal service center. And it's a, it's a controlled event, and it provides an opportunity for folks to dispose of those, um, easily without having to pay a fee when they come through the gate. So just like the cost of everything else, this particular cost is, um, proposed to go up. City of Fort Worth contacted us and said, hey, the, the cost has been between forty-seven and fifty dollars for the last fifteen years. We propose to raise that to ninety-five dollars per person. So this was budgeted. Uh, it's included in our budget. Um, what we would do is we propose to keep that cost down, uh, below four thousand dollars by limiting the number of vouchers that go out. So those are the real takeaways. It is included inside your budget already. Um, the last couple of years that we've had this event, it's been at a cost of about two thousand dollars. So what we did is we just doubled that and included that in the budget itself. There are provisions to opt out of this, uh, program, but I'm not aware of any other organizations or entities that provide this kind of service or opportunity for our residents.
Any questions for Nick on this one? Any questions for Nick on this one? I got one. Nick?
Yes, sir.
Do you, do you have any breakdown on the participants here? I know it's not a huge number, but I mean, commercial folks or is it all residents?
It's only open to residents, so it's not open to businesses at all. And so, that's why folks have to come in and give us a copy of their driver's license and, uh, prove that they're a part of the city because it's paid for with city funds.
They have to present their water bill as well or?
Uh, they just have to show that they're a member, a resident inside the city limits. And we did pass this amendment on to the city attorney to make sure that he was okay with the form.
Any other questions for Nick? Pleasure, the committee.
Mr. Chair, uh, move that we, uh, bring the Household Hazardous Waste Interlocal Agreement Amendment, uh, to council for, uh, positive recommendation.
Second.
Motion second on the floor. Any further discussion?
Uh, sorry. I just wanted to make sure. So, the, the four thousand is assuming that we don't increase the number of people.
Well, we would limit the number of vouchers available.
That's, that's how you're gonna control that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. What was the total number that went out in the, I guess, two thousand divided by fifty was the total number?
So, in the past, you know, in, in the past, we've only, we have about forty participants.
Okay.
But this last year was a, was an off year. Uh, we only had twenty-six vouchers go out, uh, and only twenty people showed up. But that's kind of the ebb and flow of some of these events. Uh, for example, the electronics recycling event that we had this past Saturday, we had a hundred and forty-eight vehicles come through there, and it was just a, it was a massive success. But it's weird how one event will be really well attended and another one not as much. But we want to be prepared if it is. I, I don't expect it to go that high, uh, but we want to be prepared if it is.
And the hazard, like what, what kind of material are we talking about?
So, household hazardous waste, it's, it's the weird chemicals from your grandma's, uh, room or kitchen where she, you know, didn't clean it out for thirty years. We get a lot of that, and, you know, it sounds weird to say it that way, but we get a lot of these mystery chemical cleaners, uh, that come in that we don't know what it is. Um, uratic acid comes in a lot of times, but typically it's products like herbicides and insecticides, fertilizer, stuff that people want to clean out of their shed that they really don't know how to dispose of, uh, but they know that they shouldn't put it in the dumpster. Paint is a huge one, and then car batteries. I mean, they bring us a truck that's specific for paint, and it always amazes me. They fill up this flatbed truck full of paint, and it's, I mean, it's eight, ten containers high. Yes, sir. All of the neat stuff that comes through. Thank you.
All right. Motion seconds on the floor. We'll proceed to vote. All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed. That will move the council with a positive recommendation. Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
Next item.
Second item.
Proposal.
Second item on our agenda is a professional services agreement with IEA Inc. It's an engineering firm that we've made contact with for the drainage improvements on the Riverside, uh, project area. So, Riverside, where Clifton and Glen Rose Road come together, it's kind of a neat triangle that comes in right there. Uh, when we were acquiring, acquiring easements for the east side sewer, part of the negotiations with the landowner there, just on the east side of Graham, uh, between Graham and Riverside were that we needed to address the drainage through there. And this is to make that promise whole. This agreement in front of you provides for the specifications, the plans, and the survey to put all those documents together for the construction of three stormwater inlets and a dedicated ditch to control that drainage. This is a big drainage area. I don't know if you've ever been over there. When it's raining, a lot of this area comes down from behind Parm's yard, and so this project will address all of that and clean up the drainage area through there. IEA is not a company that we've done business with before, but we've met with them several times. We're very excited about the opportunity to partner with a new company. The budget included a total of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, so that's already been approved in your adopted budget. Seventy-five thousand dollars was allocated, uh, of that total for these, these design, uh, specifications. Um, IEA is proposing to put this together for just under fifty-four thousand dollars and, uh, at a proposed turnaround time of just under six, right around sixty days.
Questions for Nick on this? First, it's very good. First step, gentlemen, is what I'm saying. Coming in under budget. Pleasure, the committee.
Mr. Chairman, I make motion to approve the, um, professional services agreement with engineering firm IEA Inc. for budgeted design of Riverside drainage improvement projects as presented by staff.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Here, no. Proceed. Vote all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign. That will move the council with a positive recommendation. And then, your last one, sir.
Yes, sir. Our third item and last item on the agenda this evening is for the budgeted capital improvements at our wastewater treatment plant. Uh, we've received a proposal from Providence Engineering who's worked with us on a lot of these mechanical projects in the past. This particular set of projects is for six aerators, some belt filter press improvements, some mechanical electrical improvements, and the replacement of two of our big, uh, self-priming influent pumps, uh, at the headworks at our wastewater treatment plant. They propose to perform this work, um, with a twelve-month design period, three month bid phase, and twelve months for construction phase. We think that's very conservative. We're concerned about some of the lead times, especially on the electrical equipment. That's why that timeframe looks like it's so long. I think we're gonna be able to cut that down considerably, but we want to be, we want to be conservative with that, just in case we run into any issues there. The budget does include one point five two million dollars for all of these improvements. We've, uh, negotiated a contract with Providence for three hundred and fifteen thousand eighty dollars for the design. Uh, that also includes construction phase services. So, those may go out partially over the next fiscal year when that, uh, design is complete and the construction is ready to go. That's a lot, but I'm, I want to answer your questions. It is a little bit under budget. They, they, uh, provided a construction cost for us of just under one point two million dollars. It's about twenty thousand dollars under what we budgeted. Again, we're looking at a big timeframe here, but I feel confident that this is a good contract for us.
I think the twenty thousand's gonna be a big enough cushion there?
Well, the, the one point one eight four is an estimate on the construction cost, so I wish I could tell you with certainty, um, what those are gonna be next year. And actually, we feel really good about the mechanical piece. I'll tell you that the, the electrical has been a bit of a concern just because the market's been so volatile, especially with, um, electrical items, drives, control centers, that sort of thing.
Anybody else on committee or council have questions on this one? Again, I'd say thank you, sir, for coming in under budget. I've always liked to see those numbers. Uh, pleasure, the committee here.
Mr. Chair, I move that we, uh, take the professional services proposal, uh, with Providence Engineering, uh, for, uh, the WWTP capital project, uh, as presented and budgeted, uh, to council for, uh, as a positive recommendation.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? And then those proceed to vote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed. That will move to council with a positive recommendation, and that is, thank you, Mr. Williams.
Yes, sir.
The Public Works Committee meeting, and there is nothing left on our agenda for this evening, so we will stand adjourned. It is seven oh four. Thank you all for being